Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you. Well, first off, welcome to Saddleback College. We're thrilled to have you all here today, particularly for this very important town hall that we're having here. I would like to thank and start off and thank our chancellor of our state, Jack Scott, for initiating this discussion on our student's success and how we can do better in our state and meet our student needs, and also for having this town hall and coming out to the community to get our feedback and input and also to learn more about it and hopefully to help us to know how to do better ourselves and obviously support this important statewide effort. With that, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank a few of the wonderful people in our district. And we're thrilled today and very proud of my chancellor and our board of trustees, who has been very supportive of student's success. In fact, they're right up here in the second row. First, I'm very pleased to introduce our president of our board of trustees, Nancy Padberg. Trustee Mike Meldow, Dr. Mike Meldow. Trustee Marc Milchker. And trustee TJ Prendergast. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to acknowledge our chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District, Chancellor Gary Portner. We have another chancellor with us here today. We have from the Rancho Santiago Community College District, Chancellor Raul Rodriguez. Also have my wonderful colleague, the president of Irvine Valley College, Dr. Glenn Rockmore. And did I miss any other chancellor's trustees or presidents by chance? Anybody else here? Great, I did not. Without further ado, I'm really thrilled. Once again, thank you very much for being here. I'm very pleased to introduce a colleague of mine that I worked with for many years up in the state chancellor's office, and that's the executive vice chancellor, Eric Skinner. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Todd. Well, thank you to Saddleback College for hosting us here today and to President Burnett and the board. It's really our pleasure to be here, to engage with you in this conversation about improving student success in the community college system. And really, we're here primarily to hear from you. If we can provide clarification or explanation on some of these recommendations, we surely will. But I think that most of you are probably here to share an opinion or provide feedback to the draft recommendations, and we're here to listen. So I would like to just quickly introduce the panel here. We've got Melinda Nish, who is president of the California Community Colleges Chief Instructional Officers Association. Also, the vice president for instruction at Orange Coast College and the incoming president at Southwestern College. So congratulations on that. We've got Yasmin Delahose from the LA Community College District, where she is the interim vice chancellor for programs and institutional effectiveness. And both Yasmin and both Yasmin and Melinda are members of the Student Success Task Force, and they have put in a lot of work into this project over the last year. So they are the experts here to help explain the recommendations and to listen to what you have to say. We also have in the audience Samantha Elliott from the Student Senate for the California Community Colleges. Samantha was an alternate on the task force and rotated the spot along with the president of the Student Senate. So again, what I'd like to do is make a few opening comments, just framing the conversation, providing a little bit of background, and then we are very quickly going to step through the recommendations. But the bulk of this time, we'd like to dedicate to hearing your input. So in terms of the story of this project, it really started with legislation that was introduced last year, Senate Bill 1143, carried by Senator Carol Liu. In its initial format, that bill would have changed the funding model for the community college to fund the colleges based largely on course completion rates. And so the idea behind it was rather than funding us off of the number of students we have at the beginning of the term, instead, the state would fund us based off the number of students completing courses, and in doing so, would incentivize increases in student success, at least as defined by course completion. Well, the chancellor's office and stakeholders from across the state really came out strong against that initial bill and called it out as an overly simplistic approach to trying to improve performance and student success in the community colleges. And the legislature listened, and they amended the bill into a form that essentially gave us, gave the community college system, an opportunity to develop its own student success plan. And so that's the context in which we're operating. That bill was signed by the governor, it became law on January 1st of 2011, and the bill called on the California Community Colleges Board of Governors to assemble a task force on student success, and that task force then would deliberate, and over the course of the year, and bring back to the board of governors a set of recommendations. And then the board of governors will take action on that, and actually, that'll happen this next January, and then a report will go back to the legislature. And so we're really, we're coming to the end phase of the task force's work, and that task force began its work in January, it met monthly. There were 20 members, they were appointed by the board of governors, and the composition of the task force included both experts from within our system, college presidents, trustees, students, faculty. We had counseling faculty, we had researchers from within the system, and then from outside the system, we had some business interests represented, as well as represented from a civil rights group, and another representative was an outside researcher who specializes in higher education issues. So it was a diverse body, and that task force, again, met monthly and discussed a broad range of topics relevant to student success. And it was in late September that they came together with their set of recommendations that have been public since that point, and were, those recommendations are currently going through a phase of public vetting, they are draft, and the intention during this phase is to hear from the public, hear from the community college system, from other Californians, and to Sure. Got it? Okay. To, again, to gain that feedback and that additional information that they will then take into their deliberations when they meet. There's a meeting actually tomorrow, and then there's another meeting in early December. And at those meetings, the task force will entertain modifications to their plan, they may add elements, they may subtract elements, they may adjust elements. And so with that, I mean, that really queues up the conversation today. Our ears are open, we traveled here to hear from you directly, and we look forward to this. I want to briefly describe the process that we'll go through, which is, we ask that individuals who are wanting to make a comment or to ask a question, to fill out a card, and I think you should have received these when you came in. That will allow us to facilitate the conversation a little bit and cluster comments so that we're not jumping around across the topic so much. So if you don't have a comment card so far, I think there are individuals that are passing those out, I'd ask you to get one and fill it out. And so after we're done making the presentation on the recommendations, then we will shift into that public comment phase. So with that, I will introduce Melinda Nish, who's going to step through, no, actually Yasmin Delahose, who's going to step through the first three sectors of recommendations.
Okay, let me see if we can get to
And we are just going to jump right into the action here instead of all the this context setting.
Okay, great. Let me start first by asking, how many of you have read the complete set of recommendations? Can I see by a show of hands? Okay, that's great. It's always good to know what your audience has read and not read. As a member of the task force, let me start with, one of the conversations that we had was we felt that there was a need to develop a statewide initiative to relay clear college and career readiness expectations for any community college. We know that once students are in community colleges, it is a challenge for some of them to get out, and we thought, you know, it would be a good idea if we could affect the pipeline, because as you know, the vast majority of first-time students are not testing college-ready. In fact, 79% of the students who took the early assessment program for CSU's did not test college-ready. So what we've said is that we need to have a conversation with K-12, and that conversation needs to say that since you are in the process of developing your common core standards, those common core standards should be aligned with our entry-level courses and our entry-level skills. So at this point in time, this recommendation really speaks to the fact that we need to change the mindset of some of the high school students that are coming in, thinking that the only thing they need to do is fill out a community college application and that we will take it from there. So that's, whoops, sorry, I think I'm hitting the wrong thing. Okay, so that is recommendation number one, and let's see, let me go on to recommendation number two. So recommendation number two is, one of the things that we thought about is the fact that there is a need to strengthen support for entering students. And so in this recommendation, what we are recommending is that we require, we would require students to come in, and they would be assessed, they would also go through orientation, and they would develop an educational plan. Why? Because those three things have been shown to support student success. However, we know that this is not consistently available to students throughout the state. There are some students at some community colleges that are coming in, and they are not being assessed, they are not going through orientation, and they are not having ed plans developed for them. And I know that we heard very loud and clear from the students, you know, "We don't do optional, just tell us what to do, and we will do it." The other thing that we thought about is the fact that we could never hire enough counselors in the state. I think we put a price tag on what it would take to have enough counselors to do ed plans for all students in the state, and somebody guesstimated it would be about $300 million. That's a lot of money. So one of the things we thought about is the fact that, you know, we are educating the millennial generation, and one thing that we could do is we could use technology to advance, you know, the fact that these students do need things like, you know, their ed plans. So we thought about some modules that could be put into a technology package. So the application, for example, the BOG fee waiver, you could put things in like a degree planning module, and your career exploration module, a job placement model. So we do believe that we should use technology to advance student success in the state. We also said in this recommendation that we should require students that show a lack of college readiness to also think about receiving support so that they develop what we call college knowledge. And also, students should be required to declare a program of study early in their academic careers, and if they don't develop that program of study, we need to direct them to counselors. All right, the next series of recommendations is incentivize successful student behavior. One of the things that we do know is that we are already rationing classes. Currently, most people who work in a community college will tell you that classes have been cut by and large, and so we know that we have to focus on the core mission of community colleges. The core mission of community colleges being career technical education courses, transfer courses, and basic skills courses. Why? Because we need to increase our completion rates. Anyone who's looked at community college completion rates knows that, you know, that is something that we have to work on. We must increase our outputs. So one of the things that we talked about were students receiving BOG fee waivers. And what we did was we actually looked at the research data, and what the research data shows is that when a student in the state gets to 110 units, there's a falloff after that, that the state really does not see, you know, any real investment beyond 110 units. So in other words, a lot of the students, after they have plateaued and reached that 110 units, they fail to complete anything. So we looked at that and therefore said, you know, "We would like to see our BOG fee waiver students identify a degree certificate, transfer, or career advancement goal, but that's not unlike anything we're going to expect of any other student. We want them to meet satisfactory academic progress standards, and then we would limit them to no more than 110 units for the reasons I just mentioned." And I think that this has been, one of the recommendations, provides students the opportunity to consider attending full-time. That's been misunderstood by a lot of people. We're not suggesting that students all go to community colleges full-time, although the research does show that if a student is a full-time student, they're more likely to finish. What that's saying is, is that one of the better practices in the state is that our financial aid offices are letting students know that, hey, if you are full-time, here's how much financial aid you could be eligible for. And a lot of students, when they get packaged, they don't get packaged as full-time students. So we're just saying that's a best practice that we should have throughout the state. And then, last but not least, require students to begin addressing their basic skills deficiencies in their first year. And students who fail to comply with this would lose enrollment priorities and be required to meet with a counselor. So, real quickly, I went through my three areas, and now I'm going to turn it over to Melinda, and at the end, if you have any questions, of course, we'll take them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm moving on to the fourth area of recommendations. This is to align course offerings to meet student needs. And as Yasmin mentioned, we've had several years of workforce reductions, and what has happened is we've reduced our course offerings, and we know that we're not meeting student demand. So one of the recommendations from the task force was to use the information that we would gather from recommendation area two, which are the SCPs, and use this as a foundational element in actually developing the schedules for course offerings for students. That wouldn't be the only thing that would be used in determining schedules, but we felt that that would be an important linkage. The fifth area of recommendations is to improve basic skills education. We know that there is a very small likelihood that a student will be able to go from a level four below college level and make it all the way through their basic skills education and into college level, only 25%. So we wanted to encourage development of new ways to be more successful in basic skills education, and we know what a lot of those ways are. The poppy-copy that supports the basic skills initiative has many great ideas, best practices for basic skills education. So we really wanted to focus on developing better pedagogical approaches, and not just pedagogy, but college-wide approaches to assist students through basic skills. We also feel that there is a real lack of a cohesive program within the state of California that addresses adult ed. We feel that our K-12 partners, because of their own financial difficulties, have focused a lot of their funds that had been used for adult education into other areas. And so we really feel that we need to have a comprehensive strategy in the state of California so that all adults have access to basic skills education. And this is going to require a real statewide definition of how we do that and where we put the funds. And then finally, there is another added component to this, which is a focusing of our basic skills incentive dollars. We certainly support the continuance of the BSI dollars, and we want them targeted towards those best practices. The sixth area was that of professional development. It was very clear amongst all the task force members that professional development is a necessary component to student success. But this isn't just professional development for faculty members. The real intent in this area is that all members of the college community, certainly all staff, all management, and all faculty join together in professional development activities that directly help our students be more successful. This recommendation also talks about flex days. The intent here was not to get rid of flex days, but was to really use flex days for the way they were intended, meaningful activities that are targeted towards student success. And so you'll see in that recommendation a linkage of local goals with state goals, and that was really the intent, that flex activities would be focused on student success goals in line with what our task force has proposed. So that is really the intent of what you see in recommendation area six. I'll turn it over to Eric.
All right, I will cover the last two sets of issues. The seventh block of recommendations deals with establishing more efficient statewide leadership and coordination among the colleges. And there are really three elements here I'd key in on. One is the recommendation that we, in order to stay focused on the student success agenda and in order to encourage progress on this front, that we should establish some goals, both statewide goals and campus-specific goals in terms of improving success rates. So these success rates, we would look at, not only, you know, perhaps what leaps to your mind in terms of the more conventional completion metrics such as graduation, earning a certificate or degree, transferring, but also some intermediate metrics that have been shown to be very important in terms of promoting the, you know, the final completion goal. And so some of those intermediate metrics or tipping point metrics include successful completion of a basic skill sequence, earning 15 units, earning 30 units. Students that make it to these benchmarks are much more likely to successfully advance to their ultimate goal. The task force was very focused on making sure that these goals would be broken out by demographic subgroups. One of the concerns that the task force had from the beginning was that if we, as a system, push towards improving our Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with the mic there. The, in pushing forward towards a success agenda, one of the potential risks is that we end up pushing our least-prepared, most disadvantaged students out of our system. And the task force was quite clear that they weren't willing to retreat from that part of the mission that's been so much a part of our history, of providing opportunity to all. And so by breaking out these goals by subgroup, it's a way that we can keep an eye on that and make sure that that is not the outcome, rather the opposite, that we can focus on those equity gaps and close them over time. So those goals would be established both at the state level and at the campus level. And then, in addition, a new accountability tool, a scorecard, would be established that would essentially provide that information about those, progress towards those goals in a distilled format that each college would receive, that would be, that would, you know, document and display their progress. And those tools could serve as a focal point for conversation, not only amongst the local board, but also along with the leaders from the K-12 system, along with business leaders. It provided a tool for focusing that conversation on these critical objectives. And the last element here is that the task force was supportive of developing a statewide longitudinal student database. So this would connect data both from the K-12 system, the community college system, UC, CSU, and even workforce data, so that we can have a more sophisticated understanding of what's working and what isn't working for our students. And so this longitudinal database will help to inform policymaking, both, you know, at the state level and potentially at the local level, too. The, this last block of recommendations deals with funding and the way the colleges are funded? Okay. All right, I guess I'm too close to it. Is that better? All right, thank you. Okay. So in terms of aligning resources with student success recommendations, there are a couple elements here. The task force, in the initial legislation, SB 1143, it called on the task force to explore performance-based funding and to consider that as an option for improving success rates in the colleges. The task force gave serious thought to that issue. We, the task force heard from experts from around the state, around the state and around the nation, leaders from Ohio, Pennsylvania, Washington State, they came in and talked about their experiences with performance-based funding. After significant deliberation, the task force came up with a recommendation that, from in their viewpoint, that the performance-based funding is really an unproven model, and the task force was not comfortable recommending that as part of this success plan. In addition, let's see, the second element here has to do with the consolidation of various categorical programs. The task force is proposing, in their draft recommendations, the grouping of the roughly 21 categorical programs that are in the community college budget, to group those down into three sectors, three clusters of programs. The idea here is to provide local campus leaders, college leaders, with additional flexibility in terms of leveraging resources to meet critical local needs. And so the three clusters are, one of the clusters of funding would be provided for student support. And so that student support initiative would be the consolidated funding from financial aid programs, from CalWorks, from matriculation, and from some additional programs into one pot, then the locals could use, the local district could use to support kind of various student services programs. The second sector has to do with workforce development, and so the funding that's currently provided for economic and workforce development, for apprenticeship, for nursing, and for career technical education would be folded into one pot, and those funds would be used for workforce initiatives. And then the third cluster has to do with faculty support. And so the funding that's currently provided for part-time faculty programs would be folded into one pot, again, that would be used for faculty support efforts. So the, again, the idea behind that is that, not that these programs would go away, or that these areas of focus would go away at the local level, but that these areas of focus would go away at the local level, but rather, local boards and campus leaders would have greater discretion to, in terms of using those funds, to more efficiently achieve the objectives of those programs. Another recommendation was that, that cluster of programs that I described as the student support initiative, the task force feels that that should be a high-budget priority as we move forward, that this cluster of programs that really could support functions such as orientation, assessment, education planning, counseling, other supports for students, is really at the heart of these task force recommendations. And so treating that as a top-budget priority would allow for, again, additional monies to be infused into these aspects of how colleges operate, so that students would have a more robust set of support services available to them, so that they could access their education plan, so they can get on the right pathway and receive the supports they need to successfully accomplish their educational objective. The last recommendation here was the establishing an alternative funding model for basic skills. This would be an optional program, not every campus would have to do this, but if a college opted into it, they could be funded in a different manner for their basic skills instruction. And essentially, what it does is, instead of being funded under the current model, which allocates the funding to a college based on the seat time, based on the number of course sections that a student is enrolled in, to instead fund the college based on successfully moving a student from below college level to college level, so achieving that objective. And the thinking that went behind this was really that, that the way we fund basic skills courses puts some artificial constraints on how those services, how those classes are provided, and that if colleges were given greater discretion over how to build a comprehensive program for those basic skills students, that they likely could come up with some more effective models. And so, one way to think about this is, rather than stretching the basic skill sequence out over a course of years, instead to provide it in a more intensive manner upfront, allowing that student to make some rapid progress to get up to college level. And the research the task force looked at, there was reason to think that that more intensive model was worth exploration, and this funding model would allow colleges the option, again, not the requirement, but the option, to innovate in their basic skills So that's the quick overview of the recommendations. I neglected to mention before that this meeting's also being webcast. All our town hall meetings that we've been holding have been webcast, and so there are individuals that are watching this on the web, and they will also be submitting their questions online, and so we'll be incorporating those as well. And since I'm on that, I'd also mention that on our website, and the web address is in the handouts, it's included in the handouts for today, there are some online web dialogue tools that you can access, where you can also submit feedback in that manner. And that, you know, the task force has tried to solicit the public feedback in as many venues as possible. There have been roughly, there'll be roughly 30 sessions such as this, some at conferences, some at statewide meetings, and then a number of town halls, which is technically what this is today. So the task force is very interested in getting that input, and with that, we'd like to shift gears into the question and answering, or if you want to make comments. So I'm going to have a seat here, and we're going to start working through some cards.
We've got quite a few different cards, and we've tried to combine those that are on similar topics. And it would be best, if at all possible, if those that are speaking could come to the middle. That may not work for everyone, but we'll try to do that. We're trying to get as many people as possible to have time to voice their comment or ask their question, so we'd like to ask you to try to keep to the time limit. And if you don't mind, we thought we might want to start with students. And I know that there are at least three students that have put cards in, Lorraine Wicks, Chris Cutting, Perla Reyes Godina. We'd like to start with you and any other students. Is Lorraine here?
Community College has an amazing infrastructure and statewide model steeped in history to offer diverse student learning and opportunities in line with and promoting the community college mission of lifelong learning already, which offers open access and equity at local community levels. And student success and accountability should be part of the accreditation process already. So my question is, why legislate changes to Title V, which tend to and look like they're going to hamper local districts to make individual and critical decisions that best serve their
Okay. So this, you know, essentially, this gets back to the point, I think, that both Melinda and Yasmin mentioned before about the need to, the reality that we are rationing now as a system, and that due to budget cuts, the colleges have had to significantly reduce the number of course sections that they're able to offer. And, you know, that's a sad reality. But what it's forcing us to do is to consider our priorities. And we've received some cues from state leaders. They've indicated in the last few budgets, as our budgets have been cut, that we should take care to protect basic skills, transfer, and career technical education. And, you know, those are really the course sectors that are closest to the core of the mission for the colleges. There's a lot of high-value coursework that we have offered throughout our history as a system, but in terms of that, the limited state subsidy, I think it's really important, at least at this point in our history, that we target it around those core areas. That doesn't mean that our colleges can't continue to offer a broad range of courses, but I think we just need to be more innovative in terms of how we support those. And there's a broad range of other courses that can be supported through various models, but, you know, many colleges are using a community education model, where individuals taking the course pay for the cost of the course. And so for a lot of, you know, the lifelong learning courses, a lot of the fitness courses, colleges around the state have found ways to shift those into community education to free up room within their limited budgets to support courses in career technical education, basic skills, and transfer.
And I just wanted to add that, let me put some real dollars onto the face of this issue. In Los Angeles, for example, this fall, we had to cut $28.5 million out of our budget. So that meant thousands of sections, of courses, district-wide, that we had to cut. And, you know, you've got students who are caught in the middle of this because they want to transfer, they want to get their degree, they want to get their certificate. And also, in January, we don't know whether or not there will be another mid-year trigger. And if there is another mid-year trigger, we're staring at another $15 million cut. So when you do the math, you realize that there just aren't enough classes to go around.
And I think I would just say, I agree with what both my colleagues have said, but the intent of the task force wasn't to get rid of local autonomy, nor was it to say that local colleges don't understand their local needs. But really, the intent of the task force was to focus on, how do we help students be successful with our scarce resources at this time? And that was really the intent of defining statewide priorities, but the intent was not to say that there aren't local concerns that are determined locally. Yes? Yeah, because I only got those cards. But that's fine, we'll get to you as well. How about the other two students that I called for the cards, and then we'll go over to this side of the room? There was Perla?
Yeah. I was saying... In listening to your presentation, I appreciate your dedication in helping me and my fellow students. But the only concern I have by consolidating funding of certain programs, there is a possibility that in the system, I become a student in order to not only succeed in my education, but also survive as I try and better my life and the life of my son. So, you know, for example, I have a requirement to meet 32 hours a week to receive cash aid assistance and food stamps. And, you know, the CalWorks program at Irvine Valley College allows me to, there are grants, and the money that they provide for the CalWorks students allows me to do work-study on campus to meet that requirement. So if that money isn't there, then, you know, not just for me, you know, there's other students, and, you know, I just would like for you guys to take that into consideration and see it from my perspective, you know, because, you know, like, I'm almost going to transfer next semester, I'm transferring, you know, moving up, and I want that to be available to the future generation, so.
I think I'd just give a response from the task force. The intent was not to eliminate any categorical programs through the recommendation for consolidation of funds. That was not the intent. The intent was consolidation would allow greater flexibility in using resources where right now they're in silos, and you can't mix funds used for EOPS with DSPS with CalWorks. But your point is well-taken, we've received a lot of feedback on consolidation, and the task force will be spending a considerable amount of time tomorrow discussing this very topic.
Thank you for going around and doing these town hall meetings. It gives everybody throughout the state a great opportunity, including students, to be able to see this and hear this. In addition to the town halls, we've also had sessions this past weekend at General Assembly regarding this, so I really do appreciate it. To get an understanding for my concerns, you kind of got to know what I've been and who I am. I am currently the chair for Region 8 of the SSC, so I represent the 14 schools in this area. I've been a past president of the Associated Students at Orange Coast, a senator at Orange Coast. I've also been an at-large senator for the SSC. So on the student perspective, I've received a lot of input from students over the past few years regarding a lot of the things that this addresses. I also work in financial aid, so I also see a lot of the students coming in who are looking for the funding, looking for the bog. But my comments are strictly on my own behalf, through the education I've learned under those things. I like the idea of providing students the opportunity to consider attending full-time, but we all know classes are being cut left and right. We just heard that from Yasmin about how many classes and sections they've cut out of LA. It's hard enough to get 12 units. I think focusing on something else would be a little more productive while we're cutting sections. And, again, with the combining the categorical funding, I think it's a little, we're a little too hectic right now with budget issues to be adding more things for the district to look at. Some districts can probably handle it, I'm afraid that other districts that are smaller may not. And our categorical programs, as far as the students are concerned, are really important. We just got a bunch of cuts in categoricals. I think that should be left alone for time being. Thank you.
Thank you. We had a group of students over here.
My name is Yasenia Florentino, and I'm a former EOPS student who has benefited greatly from the counseling and other services that were provided by EOPS. And these services helped me get through community college and transfer to a university. EOPS has helped me get my foot through the door and eventually cross through it into a higher education, and I oppose categorical flexibility and block grant, so that more students can benefit from programs like these.
Hi, my name is Danny Teas. I'm actually an alumni of this school. I went on to get my bachelor's from Cal State Fullerton and also my master's degree, and now I'm expiring to go to UCLA Law. I'm actually in the process of applying. I went here through the EOPS program. I also know many other students that came through the EOPS program, that are now getting their MBAs, that are providing to the community, that are counselors, teachers, and I just feel that dividing the funds will cause something wrong on something that's already working. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pega Khorsan. I'm a CalWork and EOPS student. I have been here almost for three years, and two years I'm in this program. And this program really helped me for learning English and to be successful in my college. I'm a student and almost with GPA four, and I'm a member of Phi Theta Kappa. And all of my success is about CalWork and EOPS, because without their help and their support, I wasn't able to learn English, to come to the college, and I couldn't afford for a school. And I really appreciate their help and their support, and I oppose categorical flexibility to block grant. Thank you.
All right, I see some. Okay, go ahead. And then we'll shift over here, and then we're going to go back to the cards.
I can hold on over here.
Okay, sure. Whatever works.
I'm a different kind of student, I'm just approaching my 90th birthday. I don't have any notes because I can't see that well. And I can't remember all the things I wanted to say anyway, but I think it's terribly important that the task force was not complete. You represented the central part of the college, which all of our senior adults support, the transfer, the technical education, the basic education. Over the years, we've supported them, and will continue to support them, but we're deeply concerned that you've forgotten the community in the community college program. For instance, here at Saddleback College, we have between 40,000 and 50,000 senior adults in the Saddleback area. We have three major communities. You're not thinking of them. We elect our Board of Representatives, our trustees, to represent us. We go out and work for them, we elect them, because they're going to represent the things and do the things we wish to see done at the college. I'm afraid as you take on more responsibility in the chancellor's office and take away that responsibility, the authority, the opportunity of our local college to decide how to spend the apportionment funds, we will all lose in the community, and we'll go back 50 years to the old junior college. We really don't want to see this happen. We recognize the need to cut back, but we also recognize that as a community college, you should represent all of the community. We need you to do that for us.
And I would just kind of reference back to the conversation about rationing. It's really a sad state that California's in right now, but last year, the community colleges turned away 140,000 students. Our statistics show 133,000 of those were first-time students who were shut out because our current enrollment priorities as a system prioritize students that are already in the system. So that's 133,000 students coming out of high school who are being told there's no place to start your higher education. There are a lot of us at the table, including myself here, who benefited from having an open door that I could go through in terms of attending college and pursuing my career goals. And I think we have an obligation to that generation to keep those doors open. I wish that we had money to serve all these needs in the state budget, but the reality is, we as a state, the leaders that we're sending to Sacramento couldn't come up with a way to protect the funding in our budget. And perhaps that's where we also should turn our attention in this process, is putting the heat back on the legislature and the governor to put enough money in our budget that we can keep all these priorities going. But absent that, we're going to have to ration, and that's really what is at the heart of the task force's recommendation here. And it's not an easy thing, though.
And Eric, I would just add to that, that, you know, we spent a lot of time looking at the data, and if you look at the data, where these students are going are to these for-profit institutions like the University of Phoenix, and what's happened...
And what's happening is that they are coming out with this tremendous amount of debt as a result of having to go to the University of Phoenix, if they wanted to go to college at all.
Okay. Well, we need to get back to the cards a little bit to create the structure, but I saw the two hands here in the front, and then we'll go back to the cards.
So my name is George Scutia, Jr. I am a student at Norco College in the Inland Empire. I'm also a member of the Student Center for California Community Colleges, but I am speaking on my own behalf and my experience as a student who, you know, was able to benefit from community colleges after entering the workforce after high school and when the economy downturned about three years ago, needing to gain new skills. I think one of the most important problems is that, one of the biggest issues with California community colleges is that, is the door is closing. And we do have people that are ahead of, in line ahead of me, who have been in the system for, I don't want to say too long, but I do want to say are blocking my access to the vital courses that I need in order to retrain myself and become a productive member of society and put back into the taxpayer base. And I think that's something that the mission of California Community Colleges was all about. I do have one complaint, and I want to, it's not, I want to say it because in this past weekend, over, I want to say over five hundred students gathered in San Jose at the Student Center for California Community Colleges General Assembly, and we debated resolutions, and a big topic was the Student Success Task Force. And the fact that we only have one representative on the committee. And that troubles us because there's a lot of special interests now that are coming out, and there's a lot of people that are going to say, I mean, this is the Student Success Task Force. The role of community colleges is to ensure that students succeed. And I'm sorry because I know there's administrators and professionals I work with in the community college system. It's not to ensure job security. And I'm sorry because I'm seeing a lot of the negative feedback come from the union groups and the different special interest groups. And it is about job preservation. I think if we would have had more students on that panel, and a broad spectrum, from right out of high school to those needing lifelong learning skills, to CT students, transfer students, I think we could have been able to have a better discussion, and we could have framed this a little bit better.
I'd just like to give you a quick response to that. I think that the Student Success Task Force members agree with you, and that point was brought to the Board of Governors yesterday. And the chancellor spoke directly with Kevin Feliciano, and we will have another student at our meeting tomorrow. And they're working to open that up so that there is more direct student representation on the task force.
Well, also, the other thing is, is there were three student services spots on the committee. So I think the students were well represented. I'm sorry, what was the question? The students were represented, yes.
The students were represented, yeah.
All students, yeah.
All students.
Yes, all students.
Question here.
Hi, I'm Brittany Bailey from Grossman College in San Diego. I just had a question for you guys regarding the consolidation of categoricals to kind of piggyback off of what some of the other students in the room said. I'm a former EOPS student. I'm a DSPS student, been a homeless student, you know, et cetera, et cetera. It goes on and on. At first, when I was reading about it, I was very concerned because my first impression was, I think, what they had as well, where it seems like dividing into the categoricals into these, like consolidating in these three areas would take away funding. But what you said earlier was that it would allow the, each individual program to have more flexibility. So does that mean that, like, for instance, if you had EOPS and CalWorks have their individual, like, funding, and they were grouped together, then that means if there was a campus that had more need for CalWorks, then there would be more flexibility between the funding?
That was the intent.
That was the intent. And just for clarity, the task force recommended keeping DSPS and EOPS out of the clusters. So just keep that in mind. But the idea of what you represented is aligned with what the task force considered.
And one very important point about the categorical student support grant, block grant, would be that any new monies coming into the system would go into the Student Success Initiative. And I think that that's the silver lining that people are not paying attention to in terms of an opportunity there for that particular group of block-granted programs.
All right, we're going to shift to the cards to try to march through this here. So Tom Ressler, principal from San Juan Hills High School.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Tom Ressler. I'm the principal of San Juan Hills High School in the Capistrano Unified School District. I just want to comment and, I guess, comment on the first recommendation about increasing college and career readiness. I think it's very important as we all are fighting this same budget battle. I was mentioning to my assistant principal, who's with me as well, that same issues, different packages, as we're hearing the issues you're dealing with here in the community college level. We need to recognize that we are a collaborative team. And just as in education, K through twelve, we're recognizing that high school graduation is not the end. It is really the beginning. We must collaborate with the community colleges and the UCs and the Cal States to be successful. I would just want to commend you on that first recommendation to do more collaboration. I think some of the issues with the budget would be taking care of better-prepared students for the community colleges, frees up some of those basic skills classes for the classes you'd like to be doing at the community colleges. I think it's very important that everything that you do is comprehensive. We are all in the same boat from K through graduation from college. We need to recognize that and continue with that. One of the most important things now is to develop, as you talk about some of the skills building you need for college, we need to be able to collaborate with the colleges on that in the high schools because one of the frustrations we have is we are developing our standards, developing the things we're expecting the kids to be prepared to graduate with, and we're discovering more and more that those do not line up with what the basic skills you're asking kids to come to college with. So we need to really get that conversation in place. I do want to thank Dr. Burnett and Saddleback College. They are working really well with us. We're getting some initial outreaches there with our district and our school. But I do want to use just a silly example back from the old athletic days. Just as Saddleback College has a wonderful athletic program here, those college coaches are in intimate, daily contact with our high school coaches preparing their athletic teams. We need to establish that same type of cooperation and collaboration with our academic groups, our CTE groups and all of that so that we can have, just as we have national championship football teams here, we'll be preparing and bringing kids from our schools to do the same at the community colleges here at Saddleback and throughout the state. So we want to commend you for that first recommendation, and we look to be able to partner with you in that.
All right, Dave Anderson. We're trying to, there's a closure here on the assessment, common assessment.
Great, thank you. Dave Anderson, I'm the director of Extended Education at Irvine Valley College and the past president of the Association of Immunity and Continuing Education Society. Just want to mention, first of all, comment, there's been some misrepresentation about some of the comments on 4.1. No one's saying that we shouldn't prioritize our funding. In fact, I think you hear people saying we do want to prioritize our funding. I think the point here is that what you're asking to do is to shift those responsibilities from the local areas to the state to make those judgments. If we're up in Northern California and the curriculum is focused on agriculture, we don't want the South focused on agriculture because that's not something that we're really focused on. What we want to do is we want to make sure that those decisions are being made here locally because, again, that expertise is here locally for our students. Second thing is on 2.2, on recommendation 2.2. It requires all students to do assessment, and that is going to be an extremely costly effort to do that. And it's unfunded at this point. In fact, I don't see any recommendations on funding that. And I think you need to consider some kind of opt-out for that because, again, this is something that students can make a choice on their own. If we find areas, and I think this has happened in the past, where students need to have that assessment, that is a requirement that colleges can make. So that'd be something you want to look at. And if you want to look at making it something along the lines of mandatory, incentivizes students. If students complete those assessments, give them priority registration. But to make it mandatory, you're just going to put more expenses on our system. And I think that's a whole, one of the purposes of the Student Success Task Force is to reduce those expenses and save money.
All right, you raised a number of points. I did want to reference a comment on the costs. The task force's recommendation to adopt and implement a common assessment across the system, a major driver on that actually is the cost savings. That if we're able to procure that assessment in a centralized way, we can drive the cost down considerably from what local districts are paying now. Our best estimates are districts are probably spending fifty to sixty million dollars, if not more, a year on assessments. We can procure that at the state level for closer to ten million dollars and make it available free of charge to your districts, to colleges across the state. It's troubling to us that we've heard many colleges are actually cutting back on their assessments that they're carrying out in order to achieve cost savings. Under the task force's recommendation, it would actually be unlimited in terms of the assessment would be available free of charge. So it would be a side benefit of it there.
Okay, also, I'd like to add that the focus there was on degree-seeking students. So if you have a degree-seeking student, then what we were saying is that degree-seeking student should make sure that they are assessed because that way that student is on the correct academic pathway in order to get out. So that's where that focus was when we were talking about mandatory.
Okay, on the assessment, Brenda Borin.
I have some questions about the common assessment. I'm on the state committee who's devising common assessment instrument. And I'd like to, in the task force recommendations, I didn't understand well about the off-the-shelf and then I think maybe a movement to more of the common assessment that we had in mind as a committee when we envisioned that document. So I'd like to know, you know, does off-the-shelf being currently available commercially?
So the confusion here, folks have been tracking this issue, is that there was legislation, Assembly Bill 743, I think, by Assembly Member Block that was enacted this year. They called on the community colleges to develop a, to move forward on an assessment that would be an off-the-shelf assessment. That was an amendment that was forced upon us by, through the legislative process, to try to contain the costs associated with it. The task force's proposal is somewhat different than that legislation.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it calls on us to build out a customized diagnostic assessment, I think much closer to what you probably have in mind.
I'm much more comfortable with that because we worked very hard.
And part of what state leaders, I don't think, understood the last go-round on this was that we will actually drive down the costs system-wide if we can, even with a customized diagnostic assessment that's better than what anybody's using right now, it will be less expensive as a system because we can use the buying power of the system to drive that cost down.
I think a point that you could add to that is not only will it be less expensive to create, but it will be, I highly believe, much more cost-efficient in terms of correct placement of students. For example, the people in ESL reading, writing, and, ESL reading and writing, we decided that we would try to create an instrument that would actually, students would take a short pre-test and then be funneled into the appropriate test by branching either to ESL, writing, reading. And that, and as a result, we thought we could, you know, speed up their placement and that they would be more appropriately routed. Many of our students, I think, now in the current placement tests are not placed appropriately. And so I think one thing that you might consider as you're marketing this, and I know that Bonnie Edwards has done this, but that even, the initial cost of an assessment isn't the total cost associated with assessments. And that when students are inappropriately placed, they drop out, and as a result, our completion rates are down, but also that students do not end up where they go. This is especially, I think, important for ESL students who sometimes assess many times because they take an initial assessment, they go to a class, they come back, they assess. And we thought that by creating kind of a more comprehensive document, assessment, that students would not inadvertently take the wrong test initially, and it would route them into a test more appropriate. So I'm glad to hear that, what I thought you were saying in the document section.
Well, you know, the key operative word was diagnostic, and we heard the faculty loud and clear on the task force that that's what they wanted. They wanted to be able to identify students' weaknesses. Not only that, but we had researchers who also served on that task force, and that's what the researchers were saying, that we don't truly in this state have a diagnostic, and we have to head in that direction.
And what the folks on the English, I'm just at the Language Arts Committee at the state, said was that we wanted a diagnostic through a writing sample. The math people wanted a more, what would be traditionally, I think, termed a diagnostic test. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have an announcement to make, maybe it'll make some folks here happy. The student representative that's going to be added to the task force for tomorrow is actually a senior adult student from Aloney College, so. You were heard, and we acted on it, so.
We're good.
Next comment is from TJ Prendergast, trustee from South Orange.
Yes, you had mentioned in your, when you were talking about the scorecard and accountability and measuring tools. I know myself personally and my colleague, Dr. Meldau, trustee Meldau, we both went to community colleges. I actually went to Santa Ana College, transferred to Orange Coast College, and then transferred to UC Santa Barbara without completing an AA or an AS. And according to the rules and according to this, what I'm hearing is I am a failure according to the system.
No, you're not.
As far as being counted on the numbers. As that, that it would hurt Santa Ana College and Orange Coast College's accountability and numbers. And I'm trying to figure out where that gets measured and how that would be taken into account.
Again, that's not the intent. The metrics would include you as a success story because one of the measures isn't just completion of a certificate or an AA or AS, but it is transfer. So even if you transfer without a degree or a certificate, that's considered to be a successful completion, and that is one of the metrics. In fact, even students whose workforce goals are not related to a credential, if they pass their courses, that would be counted as well. So if you just come in and do two welding courses, or, you know, you just come in and do two ESL courses because that better helps you in the workplace, that would also be counted towards a successful metric. The key there, though, is that you have to have that in your plan. So if you come in and you say, "I'm just doing two welding classes because that's what I need for my workforce goal," then we can count that, we can measure that. Did you pass your welding classes? Great, that's part of the metrics. So you would very much be a success story, and we wanted to be sure that was included in the metrics.
And I mean, there are two comments that came in from online, both having to do with CalWorks. I'll just quickly read those. Janine Wilson, who weighed in on the website, says that she is a single parent on CalWorks TANF who is very much concerned about the CalWorks consolidation in one single budget. "I'm afraid that CalWorks program will be dismantled, and I will not be able to continue my educational goals. CalWorks supports services such as academic and personal counseling, which are crucial for the success of many single parents who see this program as our last resource." One more similar from Sam. "With nearly all CalWorks students already receiving orientations, assessment, and student educational plans, and while seeing the number of associated degrees for this group of students increase one hundred and forty-four percent from 2007 to 2010, why place CalWorks in a flexible block grant?" So more voices.
Well, we've got a whole lot here.
Yeah, okay, we'll go to a different topic here on financial aid. So Dan Walsh from Saddleback College. Just left, sorry, we missed him. Okay? Javier Williams. He left, sorry. Vincent, Vincent No, is that, okay, yeah.
I'm going to read this. My name is Vincent No. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the California Community College Student Financial Administrator Association, representing over five hundred financial aid. Representing over 500 financial aid professionals, we are excited about the recommendation of the Student Success Task Force and support them. We do, however, have concern in two areas. First, the recommendation to consolidate the selected category programs, including student financial aid funding. We are concerned that this could undermine the success of the students that you are attempting to help the most and that students would not be able to receive their financial aid support that they need in a timely manner to be successful due to the capacity limitation in a ready-strained financial aid office. More than 1.1 million students in California Community College receive over $2.25 billion in aid annually. These funds not only support student success, but we have ripple efforts on the economy in local communities. We have already seen delay in aid delivery as a result of recent dramatic increase in the number of aid applicants. This delay would be accelerated if flexibility results in decreased staffing or decreased capacity within financial aid office. Additionally, there could be significant financial and compliance liability in a complex and highly regulated aid program if campus financial aid offices do not meet the federal requirements for adequate administrative capacity, including staffing. Second, we support the need for establishing standard for BAWC fee waiver eligibility. We respectfully request that you include financial aid professionals as stakeholders in framing the legislation that we apply SAP standards, identify educational goals, and administer a unit cap for BAWC eligibility. Adequate consultation and thoughtfully coordinating implementation will result in a clear standards for students to meet their consistently applied at all community college while encouraging student performance. While seemingly straightforward due to federal and state regulation that governs aid deliveries, there could be an unintended consequence of this recommendation that could restrict students' access and compromise students' success. Do not take an action that will result in less funding for financial aid office capacity and please include financial aid stakeholder in framing the related legislation.
Thank you for the input. And I would note that if individuals would like to submit their comments in writing, those will be taken as well.
I just want to say two quick points. It assumes that your BFAP dollars would change, and I do know that we will be, of course, increasing enrollment fees. So I think most presidents realize and most boards realize that, you know, our financial aid numbers are increasing by leaps and bounds, you know, given the fact that we have so many unemployed people in the state. So I think that's an assumption that might be incorrect. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is that we did have on our Task Force the benefit of having the president of the Financial Aid Association come to every meeting. So we did consult with the organization.
All right, let's shift gears here a little bit. We've got Laura Bronson from the California Community College Educators for Older Adults.
Thank you. I am Laura Bronson. I'm with the California Community College Educators of Older Adults. We're a statewide organization of older adult programs throughout California. We're concerned about Recommendation 4.1 and the Student Success Task Force's intention of changing the mission of the California Master Plan for Higher Education and the California Community Colleges from serving the entire population's needs to narrowing educational opportunities to only students who are pursuing career development and college preparation courses. Restricting state funding to only the CDCP courses will result in the elimination of non-credit courses for older adults, parenting, citizenship, and students with disabilities. The idea of retaining most of these classes as fee-based classes, it's not realistic in this economy. The result will be eliminated courses and resources for students in communities who need them the most. Please remove Recommendation 4.1 and allow each district to determine their own course offerings. Every community has unique needs and districts should have the flexibility to provide their students with their tools for success. The non-credit courses for older adults are critical to thousands of voting, taxpaying, and community college-supporting seniors. For so many with limited financial resources, these classes provide education on topics that promote healthy lifestyle choices. They help keep seniors healthy, mobile, independent, and of course, this reduces healthcare costs for the seniors and for the state of California. Accessible lifelong education has never been as important as it is today. The proportion of older adults in society is increasing, and so is the incidence of Alzheimer's disease, stroke, heart disease, and other costly ailments. Specialized courses for older adults help keep the citizens employed, active, involved, and it's the best prevention to disease. So I'm standing with the older adult program statewide to oppose Recommendation 4.1, which will eliminate the local district's ability to determine their own course offerings and further disenfranchise much of the older adult population, many of whom could not afford to continue the valuable classes if funding is discontinued. So in addition to this, we are not alone. I'm respectfully submitting over 4,000 letters that we've received in one week, and the older adult students are concerned about the impact from Recommendation 4.1. In addition to letters from the older adults, it includes letters from AARP, the Alzheimer's Association, the Arthritis Foundation, the American Society on Aging, Easter Seals, the Gray Panthers, and many more. We're presenting you with these letters of support, and we hope the Task Force will please carefully take this into consideration, and we do appreciate your time.
Very well-articulated point, thank you, and we will deliver the letters back. We might be paying some extra fees on the airplane, I'm not sure, but. As we go through, and we're mindful we've got a 6 o'clock wrap-up time, so if, we want everybody to have a chance to speak, and we're going to move through here. If somebody's made your comment, essentially what you wanted to say, and you want to associate yourself with those comments, that can be an efficient way to make the point, but we'll just try to keep marching through. Okay, those have spoken, so Nathan Rosenblatt. Sure. Watch out for the letters there.
Can you hear me okay? No?
Yes.
Better?
Good.
The young woman who spoke just before me took a lot of my steam. My name is Nathan Rosenblatt. I'm currently a student in the Emeritus Institute. I live in the senior community about five miles from here. And first, I want to acknowledge that we do understand the shortfall in funding. We've known it, we've seen it. I suffered from it personally. I was a credential teacher. I taught at Saddleback Valley Unified School District in adult education, and they visited upon us the same medicine that you're visiting upon the community college level. It doesn't work. They've got the teachers out there hawking their wares, selling their courses in order to stay in business. It doesn't work, folks. Let the local community decide for themselves. First, I don't understand the wisdom of your proposed solution in 4.1. There are multiple references to meeting the student's need. If you look at 4.1, sentence after sentence, it starts or includes meeting the student's needs, but then you define the students differently. These are only students who are serious degree-seeking, seeking for certification programs or special job training programs. So therefore, there are two categories: students and others. And the adult community education level are the other students. I hope I don't come across too strident, but I am upset it's my ox being gored. And again, all politics are local. In Section 5.1, we talk about the need for basic skills reform for traditional students K through 12 that arrive at the community college underprepared, or perhaps unprepared. My purpose here is to inject a little doubt into your proposed recommendations 4.1 and 5.1. What you're proposing to do is basically make the community-level education pay as you go, where the students pay all of the costs, everything. The state walks away, basically, from student education. It will dribble out, however you want to talk about supporting it, it will die of its own inertia. Doubt number one that I wish to inject in your thinking, and I think as I read your works, and I'm pretty good at reading, I've read government-level gobbledygook for a long, long time, and I had a hard time trudging through the learned rhetoric of academia. The funds saved under 5.1 purposes by bringing the failed products, and I hope you'll forgive me for this, but you're bringing the failed products of the K through 12 system to rest in your community college system, to make them ready, to rehabilitate them for the training, the experience, the education they should have gotten in K through 12. And you're going to make them better in a year, two years, and make them well enough to go up to senior college after the K through 12 system had them for 12 years? Sir, it won't happen. It can't.
What do we do with those people?
Okay, that is a problem. You have to take it back to your political masters in Sacramento and tell them the problem can't be solved here, no matter what we do. We can throw money after it all day long. And in juxtaposed, why pick on the seniors? Because they don't have a vocal enough support base. We're not hammering on your doors for ESL teachers. I look in the catalog. You've equated non-credit with zero credit. I look in the catalogs and I see zero credit for basic reading skills, basic writing skills. Doggone it, man, they're supposed to get that in K through 12. When they graduated from high school, it should have a meaning that they have that certificate, and you're trying to achieve it in one or two years? I don't think you can. I think you have a notion of the heavy fiscal responsibility that devolves on you, and I think you want to do the right thing. And you're trying to do it in a business-like way. I want to inject my final little bit of doubt to you by suggesting another way of looking at the business side of it. There is a maxim and business which I kind of doubt that you've heard, but if you were a battle-wary veteran, the way I am, of the business world, as well as the government world, you would have heard it. It goes like this. You feed an opportunity and you starve a problem. And I ask you folks, when you go home at night, out of this arena, you think to yourself, which that we are dealing with? The Emeritus Program that serves so many seniors here? Or trying to bridge a gap that you can never meet? And which is the problem? Which is the opportunity? And which are you going to feed and which are you going to starve? Thank you.
Okay, a lot of good points, I appreciate it. And I think, you know, I would just reiterate that the context in which the Task Force came up with the recommendations is the current reality in California, and that's a reality that's shaped by the recession, it's shaped by decisions of our state leaders to cut our budgets significantly, and, you know, there's no question at all that these are tough choices. But again, we're rationing as a system. The Task Force was saying we need to approach that rationing in a strategic way. But the points you've made have been heard, there's a stack of letters, and I can assure you the Task Force will be discussing that at some length tomorrow, so.
And I'd just like to add, you know, in some communities, when you talk about underprepared students, you also must recognize that the quality that some of these students have in terms of their high school teachers, you know, constant turnover of teachers, you know, not enough math and science teachers, et cetera, et cetera. I came from one of those high schools, and I think that I am a testament to a high school where I did not have the kind of preparation that I needed. And I recently graduated from UCLA with a doctorate, so it can be done.
Turning into a little bit of a debate, but if you want to make a point, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Actually, a transition in the next comment from Jeff Wilson, wanted to speak about ESL.
Well, thank you for taking on this task. I'm a faculty member at Urban Valley College, and I'm concerned about attempting to speed up basic skills in an intensive manner, especially with English as a second language. Learning language is not remediation, and one cannot speed up the language acquisition process. To acquire English, especially academic English, can take many years. So we know adult ed is shrinking, and we have a huge immigrant population whose success will have a dramatic positive effect on our economy. So how will we maintain and even possibly enhance our current ESL programs that support beginners all the way up to their freshman composition levels? Sorry for the voice, I've lost it.
Well, I know one of the things that we've talked about is where is this state going as far as adult ed is concerned? And I know that a lot of the categorical programs are concerned because they look at K-12 and the fact that they flexed adult ed, and then what happened with adult ed? It went away. And so I get that that is a concern because they come out of student services. And so that's a conversation that we feel needs to be had in this state as well. What are we doing with adult ed? In some areas of the state, there is no adult ed, you know? So I understand that concern, and that same question is being asked of the Task Force, and we want the legislature to get involved with the answer to that question. And I think you're speaking to the acceleration piece, and I understand that, and we understand that not all courses can be accelerated.
And the Task Force has been pretty clear that they do not want to endorse a specific pedagogy in terms of, especially in terms of basic skills of, you know, that there are various models that are showing promise around the state. And really, districts are best positioned, local faculty are best positioned to figure out those strategies that are going to work in their respective locale, whether that is contextualized basic skills, if that's acceleration, if that's a more intensive model, a modularized model. Absolutely on the instructional side. Carol Bander, regarding, again, regarding ESL.
I'm Carol Bander, and I've been teaching here at Saddleback for 35 years, both foreign language and ESL. And I want to sort of piggyback onto what Jeff said. ESL is not really remedi- ESL is not really remedial. It's something students have not learned to begin with. And if you even look at our four levels below freshman comp ESL, and German one, Arabic one, French one, outline, outcomes, course content, they're identical. You cannot speed up the language learning process like that. And the other thing I did, and I did read the document, it was my weekend chore, and when I read, I went away with the image that the only people that you're looking at is the 18 or 19-year-old high school student who may have learned what he was supposed to or what she was supposed to learn in high school, but mostly has not. And that is not our student population, and that's not the ESL population. We have here musicians, we have engineers coming. This is America's gold mine. We have engineers, musicians, teachers, doctors, lawyers, nurses, who are here to learn English. And they're all ages. They're adults with different educational backgrounds. Some are literate. At Saddleback, they all are literate because we cannot deal with literacy here. We haven't decided to. But we're not going to, I mean, can we lose them? Can we lose what they have in the paper? And I gave you a paper. I have a list of some of our star people. I won't even go through the name, but a member of the group of Waikatia. We have nurses who come back and gone through our nursing program. We currently have three teachers teaching here who went through our ESL program. And our guru, our technology guru Augustine is ESL. We, you know, we cannot afford to cut out this population and to limit it. That's it. Thank you.
Bruce Gilman? Is that the right name? It looks like, yeah.
Thank you. It is the disenfranchised who suffer the most. My concern with your proposals is that it is the disenfranchised, those who cannot counsel themselves, those who cannot teach themselves, those who cannot speak our language clearly, who will most suffer from these proposed reorganizational models. I wonder in an age of rationing, if you truly believe as a body invested in student success, if your proposals are truly going to protect those who most need our services here at the community college level.
Good. Good points. And I'd only offer that, you know, we, obviously, we began this conversation from a very imperfect place. And that's the state has gutted funding for the colleges, both on the instructional side, but also on the support side. And so we have an environment that's trending more towards a survival of the fittest environment in which course sections are limited, supports for students are at record-low levels. And so it's an environment in which the students that are most likely to persist and make it to the front of the line are the students that are the best prepared, that have the wherewithal to show up for the course even though it's closed and attend the first couple sessions, be on the waiting list and make it in. That's not the, you know, the working parent, you know, that's not the, you know, by, you know, by and large, our students with extra disadvantages, extra challenges, are being increasingly weeded out under the current environment. The task force's recommendations are really geared towards building up those support services for students, providing additional counseling, guidance, education planning, and then prioritizing courses for those students in those core areas. So it really, I think, is attempting to get at the issues you're talking about. And, you know, I just, that's the philosophy that the task force approached this with. Couple more on basic skills.
In the interest of full disclosure, I first want to say that both Yasmin and Melinda are my friends, so I'm not trying to chop the system here. My concern is about basic skills. And when I look at the recommendations, some of them are very direct. And I appreciate that specificity. For example, 1.1 says, "Community colleges will collaborate with K-12." That tells me we have to take action. I need to get together with the principal, and we need to talk about that seamless transition from the high schools to the community colleges. And I appreciate that specificity. But when you read 5.1, directed to basic skills, "Community colleges will support the development of alternatives to traditional basic skills curriculum." If I asked the audience, raise your hand, do you support the development of alternatives? I dare say every hand would be raised. So have we then addressed the recommendation? I suspect the answer to that is no. But when we use language like, well, let's support something, without knowing specifically what that means, conceptually, we can support it, and yet, we don't leverage change. And that's my concern. 5.2 says, "The state should develop a comprehensive strategy." And I agree, the state should do that. But the state isn't compelled to do that. And so language like that doesn't necessarily lead to the change that I think we all recognize is necessary. When we look at our sequences of courses and basic skills, and the likelihood that our students will enter those sequences at the lowest levels and ever show up as college students to realize their academic dreams, whatever those may be, the likelihood is not very great. And that is of great concern to me. And I would appreciate language that would empower us at a higher level to institute the change that we all know is necessary, utilizing our local resources, because locally we can do a lot of things. But when we have language that is soft, we will support, we will, we should develop, it weakens that leverage that we, I think, should have.
Yeah, we can, yeah. We definitely recognize that.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. Thank you. In full disclosure, Bob Simpson and I work together. I just had a couple of comments and a couple of questions. The Student Success Task Force report makes many inferences or references to basic skills. And we, as basics, oh, and I am a very proud instructor of basic skills with many inspirational students. And I just wanted to know that, has there been discussion, kind of piggybacking on what Bob said, about specific changes that may be made? We've talked about the option, but the option doesn't seem too optional to us right now. It seems more of a, if money is involved, it might be more of a directive. And we'd like to know, have basic skills instructors been included in the discussion and planning? And how will they continue to be included in discussion and planning in the future for basic skills?
Point of personal privilege.
Use a mic, please, just so that people on the internet can hear.
I'm in that stack somewhere, but I'm, I have an appointment to meet with a student in 20 minutes, and I'm a counselor.
Go for it.
And that's why I'm speaking.
What's your name, please?
My name is Doug Barr. I'm a counselor here at Saddleback College. I've done a variety of, held a variety of positions throughout this fine community college system in California. I want to thank you for bringing forth this important topic to all of us. Student success has been the foundation of why so many of us are in this business to begin with. It's been an ongoing challenge, and apparently, it's more of a challenge now than it ever has been. Praising your effort, I do have some concerns. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and as a representative of my counseling department. Some of our fears, the state solution, the one-size-fits-all. And it seems like a simplification of the vast complexity of the individuals that we deal with every single day. The variety of our students, some of those have been addressed in here in relationship to age and basic skills. Second language level, varied educational sophistication, varied decision-making ability, varied confidence level, including no-confidence and overconfidence. Some people have the Wonder Woman, Superman complex that think, you know, you encourage them to go to school full-time, well, they're going to try to go to school full-time and work full-time. That's a formula to fall flat on your face for most people. The employment history, crushed egos, lost hope, outside obligations, various social and cultural capital necessary to succeed in college. All of these things vary so much, and you want an educational plan as soon as they walk in the door? This plan had better include safety checkpoints at every single intersection for students needing personal, face-to-face interaction with professionals that can help them probe and solve their own problems with appropriate counseling. As I read through this plan one minute, I feel like it's the Counselor Full Employment Act. And as I read through it again, it seems like it's automation, assembly line, Detroit with robots at the intersections instead of people. You've got to maintain face-to-face contact, and you've got to have those people that can help all people figure out what their problems are and help them solve their problems with appropriate guidance at appropriate intersections. I thank you for listening. I tip my hat and raise a toast to all of us in this room that are here for student success. And may God help all of us.
Thank you for the points, sir.
I'd like to respond actually to the last two speakers first. In terms of who is on the Student Success Task Force representing faculty and more particularly basic skills faculty. Richard Hanson, a mathematics instructor from Deansville College, was there representing community college independence, but is a basic skills teacher of mathematics. David Morse, English professor from Long Beach City College, was on the task force, also teaches basic skills English. Dr. Jane Patton, past president for the Academic Senate, was a general faculty representative, as well as Cynthia Rico Bravo, who is a counselor from San Diego Mesa. So we not only had those faculty members, but we also had a significant number of administrators who have been faculty members, who have been in student support, student support counseling areas. So we really did take to heart the basic skills instructors. To our last speaker, I can fully understand how, reading these recommendations, you might be asking, is it high-touch or no-touch? The intent here was that we know that our students need high-touch. They can't just simply be counseled by a computer. We understand that. But we also think that there could be a lot of things that we could automate that would free up counselors to do the more higher-function counseling services that they're so excellent at. And some of the things that are relatively more clerical could be automated so that they could have even more time to do what they do so well. So the intent wasn't either-or. The intent was, how do we find that best balance between what can be accomplished in an automated way and never forgetting that our students need high-touch? Finally, just to dispel confusion about ed plans, there never was an intent from the task force that a student couldn't change an ed plan. We know that students come to explore and that they're going to change their majors a lot. And that's okay. That's fine. But not declaring a goal, you won't go anywhere. You need to at least start and say, there's something I want to do, even if it's exploring. So I think that we're sensitive to that, and we apologize if, reading the recommendations, one had the impression that we didn't want to allow students' choice. That wasn't the intent, and we'll take your comments back to the task force.
All right. Another comment from online, or question. How do we get the legislators involved before these recommendations get to them? Well, what I'd mention here is that the legislature has shown great interest in this process as it's unfolded. There have been three or four briefings for legislative staff on the topic. They've attended many of the task force meetings. And the folks who were instrumental in having the initial legislation enacted have remained engaged. And so I think that, you know, my advice always with community college stakeholders is, you know, work, you know, get to know your local members. Build out those relationships. It's a great thing for the overall health of our system for legislators to hear from us. So I'd encourage your involvement with them. And as these proposals move forward, and again, they're draft now, they will be modified, I'm sure before the board acts on them. But as these proposals move forward, they will not automatically become law. Proposals that have to do, that would require a statutory change will still need to move through the legislative process. That's a long implementation cycle. Changes that would involve a regulatory change will have to move through that regulatory process with a first reading and a second reading at our Board of Governors meetings. So I would encourage you to be engaged not only, you know, in the short term as these recommendations are finalized, but then that additional phase of implementation, again, I would encourage your participation, not only with legislators, but with the Board of Governors and with the task force as we move forward. This process will benefit from your thinking. And it's not going to happen overnight. None of these processes happen quickly. So there will be ample time for your voice to continue to be heard as this moves forward. All right. Well, we're going to try to make sure we get to all the topics here. This one, okay. So this, David Lawhorn, about workforce training programs.
Yeah, my name is David Lawhorn. I'm the train director with the Orange County Electrical Training Trust. And we're here to discuss or oppose a recommendation 8.1, which, you know, you brought up some of the categorical, which apprenticeship is a categorical. And I just don't think that, which we run into a lot, that the task force members or, you know, some of the students really understand apprenticeship. We have a 78% success rate to certificate. We're affiliated with Rancho Santiago College. And if this program, you know, and like I said, I just don't think the public at large understands how apprenticeship. Our students are working while they're going to school. They're working 40 hours a week. They're starting rate here in Orange County for electrical, total package is around $22 an hour. Where can somebody coming out of high school start at $22 an hour? And we'll send them. It's sort of the unknown secret, but we publicize it. But I just don't think most people understand the whole thing. The Montoya funding, which is RSI funding, is a categorical. State legislature has been in effect for 40 years, over 40 years. So it will take legislative action to change that. So I think that the task force should also look at the, you know, some of these items like this, that why would you want to put up that fight? If you're going to make some of these recommendations, you might want to think about, you know, maybe that's something we should look at and remove based on the comments that you're going to get. And also understanding apprenticeship, you know, throughout the state. And I'm just speaking on behalf of just the Orange County, because that's all I cover here in Orange County. But there's over, I think, well over 25,000 apprentices in California. So you just need to understand that. And I have a letter that I'd just like to submit, because I know there's some other speakers that are going to bring up comments. But I want to also bring up the diversity of our program. We're 50%, you know, minorities, and, you know, we're 50/50. So it's a very diverse program here in Orange County, you know, based in San Ana. I just want you guys, the, you know, public here at large, to understand that. That 78% success ratio, they graduate with jobs as they go into the workforce, making well over, you know, close to $60 an hour total package. All right? Thank you.
Well, thank you for the input. And I would say that the feedback on the categorical consolidation has probably been some of the most kind of robust and specific feedback we've received. Over our website, we've had 9,000 responses from individuals weighing in. You know, a large portion of those are on these programs. So the task force will be discussing these issues tomorrow. Is this put into the item?
But I didn't put anything on it.
Okay.
Because I wanted to see if you'd recognize an undeclared person.
Well, we do have a pile.
I just did. What's your comment?
I'm Bob Cosgrove, I heat Saddleback College. I don't want to wake up some morning soon and discover that Saddleback College and 111 other community colleges have become the Costco of education. One size hurts all. What I am concerned about, and that's a cheap shot, I understand that, but I have been on a task force for the university system at Texas and also one at Missouri. And I understand your situation, though the state is in much more difficulty now. With the 50% rule that was passed a number of years ago in Proposition 13, both those have really hurt the community college system. Try running the chancellor's office with 50% part-time administrators and see how well you would do.
office with 50% part-time administrators, and see how well you would do. And I appreciate the principal's remark about the coaches. We would like to take, you know, our 50% and spread ourselves out to the other areas that we work with in the elementary and secondary schools. We just have the manpower to do that. So, it really becomes a problem for us. And a couple of other remarks that I did notice as well, a concern about the language in the document. And having read it once, and then highlighted a few things, I understand how difficult this is, but a lot of the buzzwords really are kind of verbal cholesterol. They clog what it is you're trying to say. And maybe you weren't clear about what you wanted to say, because it's a difficult task. And I certainly understand that. And it is pressing, obviously, to all of us, and to you, to recognize the problems that will perhaps be unanticipated down the road, once some of these recommendations are finally made. Last two points, the Educational Testing Service did an extensive study about why students drop out of school. And for every student that drops out for an academic reason, three others drop out for other reasons. So, a kind of plan that you're suggesting, if I understand it, may not be appropriate for these other students, who are bright and talented, but because of work issues, transportation, all sorts of other reasons, aren't here. And so, that, I don't know how the task force can address that. I think it's very difficult. And finally, I think it was Warren Buffett who said, if you can't put your ID on the back of my business card, you don't have an idea. And there were times when I read some of those sentences, and I couldn't understand what was going on there. Other ones, I did. And I appreciate very much what you have done. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that input. Let's see. Some of these, I think I'm going to start just reading the question, just to try to move through. Given the task force, given that the task force meets tomorrow to create a draft report, how will today's meeting and meetings after tomorrow work into the process? Well, these two task force members are going to catch a plane shortly, and go back, and they will incorporate your feedback into the, into the task force deliberations. I would tell you that one benefit of doing this much outreach is that the feedback has kind of filtered, it sorted itself into probably five or six key areas. And, you know, I guess you have a big enough sample, you know, and you start seeing some patterns in it. So, I, the comments we're hearing tonight are, while unique, are, you know, in many ways, consistent with what we've been picking up elsewhere. So, rest assured, the feedback from today will be incorporated, both because it fits into that overall pattern, but because you've got a couple of the task force members in front of you right now. Okay, we're short on time. I, go ahead, yeah. Go ahead, yeah.
Somebody's called me. I'm Dr. Ron Dennequore. I've been a, I've been a volunteer tutor at our Learning Assistance Program for the last 11 years here. I have directly worked with the students of all ages, not just 18, 19, but up into rather advanced adulthood. And, but we have, we people in the Learning Assistance Program throughout the state have been right on the firing line, doing what you have want to do. We have been assisting the students who weren't prepared properly in their previous education to accomplish their task in college. So, we have done quite a bit, and hopefully, you will not affect the funding for our very good program. And this is a program that has to be directed by the local people. In our case, in Saddleback, is Patty Weeks, who's done a tremendous job. Now, the one thing that I wanted to comment about is that the task, in addition, is that the task force has been very academic. And one element that has not been looked at at all is the community.
Keep the mic here, so people can hear you. Yeah, go ahead.
And so, I think people from the community, I'd be glad to volunteer to be on this task force as a member of the community. And I'm sure that there are plenty of others who have talked, that you can invite, and will bring our viewpoints forth. And I think they're very valuable viewpoints. And we hope that the program of representing the community will be kept. The Emeritus Program here, and eventually, this is a bad time to bring it up, but we have to have adult programs for people who are not looking for degrees, but need to be reeducated. That means perhaps bringing in other people, like local industry, to actually teach seminars at our local community colleges, to actually engage the adults now. And they could be the students who are going to get degrees or certificates. They're going to come back, they need education to get jobs, or maintain the security in the jobs they have now. So, I hope that you will bring some of us onto your task force to give you further input. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're, got to get these two on a plane here shortly, but they're, and what we've attempted to do is go through the questions, so that each topic gets some coverage. If there are some unique points that have not been heard yet, let's see a few hands here. In the middle?
Okay. Hi, everybody. I'm Yasmin. I'm from Orange Coast College. I'm a student representative at Orange Coast College as well. This is my third semester at OCC. I respect everyone here, but being a third semester student, I find it extremely unfair that people who have had the chance, and who have gone through the master ed plan, want priority. I can't get classes, because I'm competing against people who have already had the chance to get an education. I have to stay an extra year at Orange Coast College, because I couldn't get the classes I need, because of people who are taking classes for fun. And it's unnecessary. It really is. At General Assembly this weekend, I voted for 23,000 students at OCC. And every single one of them agreed with everything the task force is doing, except the fact that there was only one student representative, which is being addressed. And I think that a majority of us, being between 18 and 25, we should have the most priority. We should be the first ones to hear, because in high school, I did great. Yet, when I got to college, I was put in basic skills. I mean, there's obviously a problem with that. And the only problem I have with that is the collaboration. I don't want that taking money from the community college system, but I think it needs to be done. I think that there does need to be a cap on the bog waiver, because students keep taking classes, and it's pointless. I'm sorry to everyone. But us who are working toward degree, us who want to go to great schools like UC, Berkeley, Harvard, Stanford, where many of us are going or have gone, needs to be heard. Thank you.
All right. I think we've got time for about three more hands here. So, back, right there, yeah.
You gave her the impossible task.
Sorry.
I would have to agree with some of the points that the student made, because me personally, and some friends of mine, are attending IBC. And I was a really good student at high school. I do my homework. I'm really dedicated to my studies. I love learning. I love English. I love the language. It's my second language. But I found really interesting how, when I moved to college, I was placed in a, in a basic level of English, not basic, but it was the level before college level. And I was really surprised about that, because I did really good in high school. So, I noticed that when I wrote my essays, my first essay for my first English class, I had a lot of mistakes, like misplacing commas, not even using commas at all, where I had to use them, didn't even know where to place a period. And I was really concerned. I'm like, why didn't my teachers in high school ever told me these really basic things? Like, I should already know this. And I felt like really dumb. I'm sorry, I have to use that word, but I felt really dumb. I'm like, I should already know this stuff. And I'm learning it, and I'm getting really good at it. And I'm really happy, because I have a great teacher who is here, by the way, Professor Boron. She's amazing with all of us. And I'm improving so much. I'm improving so much. I'm so proud of myself. But I have a lot of friends in my class that, like me, have the same problem. And they're, they're very basic problems. So, I think that we should start in high school, and the basic problems are in high school. Thank you.
All right. And again, I'd ask people to be mindful of the time. We'll try to stick around for a few comments. But if your, if your topic has been expressed, you know, please be economical with your words, if you would. Right here.
I'm Patrick Knight, and I run the San Diego Electrical Training Center. And right where it says categorical funding, specifically in 8.1, where it says apprenticeship, it's getting cut. What they're doing, they can wordsmith it all they want, but it's happened up north to other directors of other apprenticeships. And they move it into the general fund, they spend it however they want, and they cut it away from apprenticeship, and apprenticeship isn't successful because of it. They already take their point from, or money from Montoya. As the legislator puts Montoya toward apprenticeship, the community colleges got their foot in, and they take administrative fees before it gets to apprenticeship. When that funding started getting cut through the legislator, they still got their 15%, and apprenticeship got what's left over. Now, it's moving into the general fund, and, and this is apprenticeship, but I'm talking about every other program. With that money doesn't have a name on it. It's in the general fund. And now, those apprenticeships are getting charged by the community college to administer their program. They're dumping the community college, and their LEAs are Department of Eds. So, all you're doing is driving students away from the community college by doing things like this. And one thing we express is, apprenticeship's a great start. You have a full-time job. I was apprentice myself. I was a journeyman wireman. I made over $200,000 through the course of my apprenticeship. I graduated without any college tuition on my back. I bought my, bought my home during my apprenticeship. Okay? It's a successful program. And if we cut it, the next thing is, you know, they don't go into apprenticeship, because apprenticeship can't afford to exist. Okay? So, that's what happens when they use the fancy terms of categorical funding, and, you know, diverting or whatever they use. It means cutting your programs.
Okay, thank you. Over here on the right.
Good afternoon. My name is Vicki Hay. I'm the coordinator at Orange Coast College of the CalWorks program. I am also the past legislative chair for our association. My concern is, is with putting CalWorks into categorical flexibility, is that we have a concern with federal drawdown dollars. That is a big concern. Not only are we risking the $26 million that we receive in CalWorks funding, but we also risk the $8 million that we receive in TANA funding. So, this does not only just affect the community college, it affects the State of California general fund as well. The California Welfare Directors Association opposes these recommendations, as does Western Center on Law and Poverty, and the Childcare Law Center. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. In the back there, in the sweatshirt.
Hi, everyone. My name is Carlin Bradley, and I go to Citrus College. And my concern is, we went through the recommendations. I'm a part of the chancellor's office counseling advisory committee, and I brought this up there. There really is very little mention of vocational education. And I know that that's one of the things that community colleges is known for. Like Citrus, we have an awesome cosmetology program. And if that's kind of not being addressed in the plan, what is going to happen to schools that do focus on vocational education? Something to keep in mind.
We did say that the mission was CTE, and CTE stands for Career Technical Education. So, vocational courses are included in that.
Yeah. Okay, here, here on the aisle, yeah.
I'd like to add in addition to the ESL question, that was covered very well. But one thing that has not been discussed are international students, that if we move students to levels below transfer level, we'll also have to move international students. They cannot take non-credit SCE, Adult Education Courses. It is against their visas. It is illegal. I'm sorry, I'm Kathy Yanoz at Cypress College. At Cypress, it would be for us approximately a million dollars. Fullerton, our sister college, about $2 million, that those students bring in. Now, so we would be shortcutting ourselves monetarily, but most importantly, we would be shortcutting all of those international students statewide. And there are thousands.
Could I ask for a point of clarification? Was that on the recommendation that we restrict academic credit to no more than two levels below? Is that what you're referring to, or something else?
Yes. Because even though that was in the first draft, that we still
That was dropped.
We're still dealing with the repercussions of that.
Okay. But that recommendation was dropped.
So, there had been a recommendation regarding restricting credit instruction to courses that are only two levels below college level. And the task force decided not to adopt that as part of their draft recommendations. All right. I see a number of, people are trying to leave. I want to be respectful of both the audience, and also the task force members who need to get back to the meeting. I'll remind people that your input is also, you can be submitted online. The web address is there. And I think with that, we need to call it a night. And we very much appreciate your participation here. Thank you.